Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for January 23rd, 2024. First item of business is to go into closed session. Stacy?
Item one pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiators Judy Hawkins and Nick Marvin, Labor Organization Service Employees International Union Local 2015. Item two pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation Greer et al. versus Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 18CB43460.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item in the room? Any online?
There is none online.
Very well. We will recess to closed session and we will return at nine o'clock. Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the January 23rd Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting calling this meeting the order. If you are able, can you please stand for pledge of allegiance? Thank you. We'll have a report out in closed session. Stacy?
Item one pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiators Judy Hawkins and Nick Marvin, Labor Organization Service Employees International Union Local 2015. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference at legal counsel regarding existing litigation Greer et al. versus Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 18CB43460. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to staff announcements. Are there any staff that would like to make it or board members that would like to make an announcement? Adam, public comment. Adam?
Yeah, public comment.
Public comments can come up next, but we're going to do the, this is just for staff announcements. Any online?
There are no online requests.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to recognition and acknowledgements. Supervisor stopper.
Always. This is a proclamation recognizing January 2024 as mentoring month in Calaveras County. Whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to raise awareness of and celebrate the powerful act of mentoring relationships, recruit new mentors, and encourage institutions to integrate quality mentoring into their policies and practices. And whereas Calaveras County recognizes the contributions of volunteer CASA mentors and CCOE Youth Mentoring Program mentors who link youth to economic and social opportunity while also strengthening our community. And whereas youth development experts agree that mentoring encourages positive youth development and smart daily behaviors such as finishing homework and having healthy social interactions. I need to teach my daughter how to finish her homework. And has a positive impact on the growth and success of a young person. And whereas mentoring programs generally have a significant positive impact on youth academic achievement, school connectedness, and engagement, and educational success which can lead to outcomes such as improved attendance, excuse me, grades, test scores, and classroom behavior. And whereas effective mentoring of underserved and vulnerable populations, young people helps them confront challenges and enjoy improved mental health and social emotional well-being. And whereas mentoring programs have found to positively impact many aspects of mental well-being including reducing unhealthy coping mechanisms, improving interpersonal relationships, and reducing parental stress. I could have used some of this when I was younger. And whereas young people with a mentor are more likely to enroll in college, case in point, to participate in sports or extracurricular activities and to volunteer regularly and less likely to start using drugs. And whereas mentoring is an innovative evidence-based practice and is both a prevention intervention strategy that can support young people of all demographics and backgrounds in all aspects of lives. And joking aside, mentoring is very important to our younger generations and the connection between and the education and the way to conduct themselves throughout life is very important. You know, it can be a family member, but more often than not, you know, that kind of connectedness I've found comes from somebody outside the family unit sometimes. Would anybody that has, Farah, your group and, yeah. Thank you, ladies.
Good morning. My name is Maylee Johnson. I'm the Deputy Director of Social Services. And before I introduce Kayla and Farah, I just wanted to say that the CASA program mentors and volunteers and the volunteers for the Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program have been really vital to a lot of our children growing up with consistent supportive adults in their lives, which we know positively impacts child abuse prevention throughout our county. So I wanted to just thank these ladies for all of the work that they do. And without further ado, I will introduce Kayla Gaffney and Farah Roberts.
Thank you. I am the manager of the Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program out of the County Office of Education. The Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program is a one-on-one mentoring program where youth are recommended and matched with volunteer mentors based on common interests, where they live in the county, and personalities. For 20 years, we have fully screened, monitored, and supported our volunteer mentors and mentees. We provide training, field trips, and mentor counsel. Matches spend approximately two hours a week together for at least a year, doing fun activities such as fishing, biking, snowshoeing, or just hanging out and exploring the wonderful county we live in. Our mentees learn to build stronger relationships, explore new interests and hobbies, and improve their self-confidence, decision-making, and view of their future. At its core, mentoring shows our young people that their community cares about them, sees their strengths, and wants to nurture their future and talents. We have some pretty amazing kids in Calaveras County. Youth who face life challenges with strength, resilience, creativity, and hope. Young people who are brave enough to invite safe adults into their lives who believe in them and want to invest in their greatness and experience a smoother road to adulthood. During National Mentoring Month, we also celebrate our other mentoring programs within Calaveras County such as FNL Mentoring, which is a school-based peer mentoring program, and CASA. Calaveras Mentoring receives financial and administrative support from the County Office of Education, various contracts with county agencies, and grants and individual donations solicited by the Calaveras Mentoring Foundation, whose mission is to raise awareness and funds for local youth mentoring. Your proclamation today helps us celebrate and grow these important programs. Every youth who wants a mentor should have one, but not every youth gets one. There are currently four girls and eight boys throughout Calaveras on our waiting list. We depend on community members to spread the word about mentoring programs and help us find volunteers for our eager young people. Please contact us if you have someone that you think would make a great mentor for one of our amazing kids or if you would like to have a mentee. So thank you and happy National Mentoring Month.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Farah Roberts. I'm with the Court Appointed Special Advocates Program. Humans are social animals. Sometimes we forget this in our culture where we reveal a revere self-discipline and determination. But study after study reveals that the best way for people to overcome trauma and stress is through positive relationships. For children, that is especially true. Beyond the parenting relationship, outside adult relationships are very important. Calaveras County is very fortunate to have a mentoring program. When I visit nearby counties to talk about what services we have available for children, the mentoring program stands out as an example of a program that is desperately needed and part of the prevention of child maltreatment. Families struggle to make ends meet in this county, and even well-known programs like Scouts and 4H cost money. But a program like the mentoring program, which is free to a child and their family, is worth its weight in gold. The program I manage, the Court Appointed Special Advocates Program, we specifically mentor, have a mentorship role with children who are facing abuse and neglect. Our clientele is narrow, but we do serve that mentorship role. Being in a mentorship role is the fun part of being an advocate. Some of the ways our CASAs have helped these children included teaching a child how to fish, who had never been outside for the first time, and taking them on walks or hikes or chaperoning them to a college campus. Children in Calaveras face many challenges with the shortage of resources. But the more children we can get linked to positive adult relationships, the better. So this proclamation goes a long ways to helping the community to realize that we need more volunteers. Like Kayla mentioned her waiting list, I have 14 kids on my waiting list. And we just need word to get volunteers and funding to continue to help with this volunteership role. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Farah. And you know, all the volunteers that mentor across the county, it's invaluable. And that's where a lot of the space comes from. And you know, we appreciate everything you do for our children. Is there any public comment to this? Terry, good to see you.
Terry McBride, New California District Two for this. My mom and many of her friends helped start Big Brothers Big Sisters. And I'm sorry to see Catherine isn't here. Catherine did the mentoring program for years. And it is a phenomenal program. It's truly listen. So I hope many people that have something called time, I don't, but people do have time and they're only going to do it. And I hope that they would reach out to the, I guess the new administration, huh, you guys, for the work they do. I've seen firsthand the benefit that it gives kids. So I think it's phenomenal. And I really think we ought to give them a round of hand, right, of applause for all the work they do. Thank you.
Any further public comment? I'll bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
Okay.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Hubbard, second by Ms. Foulndor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Didn't think so? So I'll finish it all. Now therefore be it resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim January 20th, 24 as National Mentoring Month in Calaveras County. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ben, for putting that together. And I see a lot of really great possible mentors in this room. And so if you've got any extra time and are willing to help out our kids, please do join these programs. We will move on to general public comment. I started reading through the whole paragraph. I think most of the people in here know the way this works. Items that are not on the agenda, so if you want to pull something off the consent agenda or talk about that, please wait till that comes up. Our animal shelter, I see we've got lots of people in the room on that as well, that'll be later on. But if you have general public comments that are not related to the agenda, please come up forward now. You'll have three minutes. Terry, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Terry McBride, Steel District Two, Calaveras County Community Chair and Senator. You know, three weeks ago, or two weeks ago, I came and at the end of September, I came and I went and looked at the recordings. You know that they were completely distorted? Completely? Do you know that I recorded all of that, saved it, sent it out? They were distorted. All of a sudden last night, they're back to normal. But I still have the recordings of the distorted. That's my first amendment. This is your new book. You guys, I want you to read it and know it because it happens to me. Who else? Everybody that comes here should have a perfectly clear audio afterwards. Now, on better things, more positive, because I'm going to just assume that was an error. I would like to think that sophomoric professionalism does not exist in our county. Calaveras County Democratic Election is happening at the County Library on Saturday from 10:30 to 2:30. Must be a California ID proof of residence like utility bill. We show how we can go back to paper ballots here in county because we have some problems in our country having access to this. And if we go back to paper ballots here in county, totally transparency. So we invite all of you to join us. And in fact, I'll drop this off as I'm leaving. And then the other thing is Thursday evening, I have a town hall at the Round Table Pizza in Angeles Camp, 5:30 to 7:00. Again, anyone who would like to come, it's open to the public. Come find out what it is we are doing. We will be the 51st state of California. Very important to know. So today I'm here to read the, "We, the people of the great New California State, notice to all Californians, Declaration of the 11th Constitution of default." Statement, I'm going to skip over that for a minute of time. This is count seven against Gavin Newsom and his administration and the government of our state, unfortunately, a selective government who has never won an election to office without the help of a corrupt and repulsive selection process where the globalist cartels and the Chinese Communist Party, or CCP, pre-selected the outcome to a leader who places him in office, has committed treason. A selective government who identifies Article Four, Section Four, and its three guarantees of a republican form of government, keeping all American streaming invasion and that of domestic violence, is committing treason. The 2018 midterm election, 2021 reelection, and the 2022 midterm election were all lost in one-to-one balloting, but with the help of a fraudulent electronic election system and algorithm, and the actions of the globalist cartels and CCP, a dictator was installed to oversee their province of California." Debbie will finish.
Thank you.
Bonnie? If you'd like to speak in public comment, if you could line up and we could keep things moving. Bonnie? Good morning.
Good morning. Bonnie from Double Springs. Two things. This morning, I'd like to report that I'm not sure who to thank, but what's wrong?
I'm sorry. Don Kent, hear you. Can you speak up?
Okay. God, don't.
Start over.
That's okay.
Start the clock. Bonnie, go ahead.
Let me think. Oh, two things this morning. Someone put not a speed limit sign, but speed contraptions. Those things on the side of the road that says, "Speed limit is this and you are going this." There's two of them on Double Springs. And I don't know who's to thank for that, but it made a big difference. The traffic was way down. Even the morning traffic that zooms by on the way to Jackson or whoever is way down. And it's really made a difference to have some kind of speed limit on that road. Just like to let you all know. And the second thing is, oh yes, last week, whenever I was complaining about horrible-looking campers and things parked on the side of the road, I had a thought. Those people that are camping on the side of the road are taking business away from our campgrounds. If we had perhaps a voucher where these people could have one free night at county's expense, of course, to go to a campground and get off the street, maybe we could start dealing with the problem if they get one free night, but after that, get away, go away, get out of here or something. But I was just trying to think of a way to solve that problem. On Double Springs, I think the problem was solved by PG&E parked all of its equipment in that area where the camper was parked. And there was no room for the camper, so they had to get out of there. But one thing I could say PG&E did right, besides all the things I have to complain about them doing wrong. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next speaker.
Bonnie, that was Robert Packenger. Back there, you can...
Hello. My name is Debbie Rojas, Assemblywoman of New California State, Calaveras County. I'm just going to pick up where Terry left off. Now with the help of federal courts in the state of Georgia and their unwitting corrupted Secretary of State Brad Raffensperger, the evidence is clear for the world to see how the selected treasonous governor of the province of California and thousands of down-ballot corrupt selected officials turned the once-great state of California into a Nazi-communist totalitarian province. In June 2023, the Federal District Court of the Northern District of Georgia unsealed the so-called 96-page Haldeman Report, the security analysis of Georgia's image cast X ballot marking devices. Georgia's Secretary of State Brad Raffensperger had been hiding the report from the public for two years. University of Michigan Professor of Computer Science and Engineering Jay Alex Haldeman and Security Researcher and Assistant Professor at the Auburn University Drew Sruggel collaborated on the report where they discovered many exploitable vulnerabilities in the Dominion voting machines image cast X system. Jay Alex Haldeman demonstrated in court how the Dominion machines are hacked and their tabulations are easily altered to select any individual for in the office. In the Georgia courtroom in January 19, 2024, Jay Alex Haldeman demonstrated in explicit detail to the court and to the world how easy it was to hack into the Dominion voting machines and alter the votes. This was the first time in a court of law such a demonstration has taken place, which altered which details in undeniable fashion of how the vast electronic election systems can be altered and thus corrupted. Following an audit over the elections of 2018, 2021, 2022, utilizing data provided by each California county, the Secretary of State office, it was obvious that the algorithm was used to create weighted vote values in the Dominion and other vote tabulation devices by those whom facilitated the selection of the governor. The evidence in the Georgia federal court presented by Jay Alex Haldeman overwhelmingly supports the use of an algorithm to facilitate the corrupt election of the governor. The fraudulent election system does not function without the help and the support of the state and county employees who either know...
Excuse me. It's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments on items not on the agenda?
I'm Adam Lewis with the Calaveras Band and Milwaukee Indians. I'm a tribal member, also a cultural resource specialist assistant for my tribe. I have some things to talk about that's not on the agenda for the wagon trail of 2024.
Adam, my understanding is that you want to pull that off consent agenda for discussion later on?
Yes.
That would be the appropriate time to, we'll give you that time.
We were made aware to do this process, so I would just want to get it on so we can come to a...
When we get to that, we're going to pull it off and we'll have a discussion on that item.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Terry, let me get one bite of the apple. Okay. Other public comment? Anything online?
There are no online requests.
Board recognizes Chairman Russ Thomas from Calaveras County Water District. Chairman? Former supervisor, I should add. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan Gannoni, for that warm welcome. I'm here today a little bit to reflect on when I used to sit up there where Martin Hubbard is sitting now. I had four wonderful years here, some better than others. But it warmed my heart that I can still see people up there that I have on my speed dial. And when I call you, you answer the phone. So that's really very commendable. But the most important thing that I want to talk about today is something that came to my attention when I was sitting up there, that there is nobody, a very close and long relationship between the County Board of Supervisors and the members of the Board of Calaveras County Water District. That always puzzled me because mathematically, right now, with 45,000 plus citizens in the county, we serve about 33,000 of those same citizens. So it really makes perfect sense to me that there should be ongoing discussions, maybe not as formally as would trigger down at considerations, but certain conversations need to be happening fairly frequently between our respective boards. I tried to apologize that when I was on, sitting up there, there were a couple of board members that didn't have any infection for Calaveras County Water District, so that was, we couldn't pull that off. But we started back when I was chair four years ago at CCW D, and then COVID happened. So I'm throwing out a moldering branch. I'd like to buy lunch for a couple of you sometime. Let's talk. And I haven't had a chance to interact with your new CEO. Congratulations on your position. And I see some wonderful things that have been happening here. So come and visit. We'll come and visit you. And if you have any questions for me, I'm here to talk for another minute or so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. And I think I speak on behalf of our board. We look forward to working with your board as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Stacy, will you read that out?
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Any board members wish to pull an item from consent agenda? Any staff members want to pull an item from consent agenda? Any public want to pull an item from agenda, from the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Adam, which number is that?
16.
Okay, we'll pull item number 16. Let's move forward on the remainder, and then we'll come back to item 16. Just, you can stay there.
So moved?
Moved by supervisor stopper?
Second.
Second by supervisor Toffinelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item number 16 has been pulled. Adam, you want to?
Hello, once again, I'm Adam Lewis with the Calaveras Band and Milwaukee Indians. I'm a tribal member, also a cultural resource specialist assistant. I've been working on the wagon trail project with you folks since 2022. Here we are going on to 2024, and once again, we're at the budget part of the beginning. And we met around the table with some of your officials and negotiated some terms that were agreeable with the tribe. And then things were put in where things were cut in half. And we have a lot of concerns on these for, we want to be upfront and honest to you board members of what this is going to cost to do for the rest of the season. Rather than individuals bringing forward what you guys will agree to, then we have to come back in front of the board... what you guys will agree to, then we have to come back in front of the board and present, hey, there's still more funding that needs to be allocated to do the remainder of the project. So under close communication and understanding with the contractor, Suket, on the days proposed for work and the weekends, we did our best to put a budget together to, to accommodate that, that work plan. And so when we did that, talking, we came up to an understanding, and then things were cut in half, and then hourly rates were cut. And so we have a lot of questions to ask you guys. And from our understanding with the Caltrans and lead agencies involved, if there's not an agreement made between and understanding between the county and the tribe for this project, it may well just die out if we can't come to a resolution of how we're going to move forward here. And I'll go ahead and reserve my time for our vice chair, Deborah Grimes, with the Calaveras Band of Milwaukee Indians. Thank you.
Vice Chair Grimes, welcome.
My name is Deborah Grimes, tribal vice chairperson, also tribal cultural resource specialist for 30 years of Calaveras County and small portion of Amador. As always, we're here to build and have a wonderful relationship. As we say, we're not here to be enemies or buddies to go have tea, nice if we can, okay? We're here to work together in a professional manner. As you guys know, this project went on, you guys adopted it, that's your business. But throughout those years, we were left out of that, and then we came engaged in it again. We were engaged in this project with Caltrans until it got adopted. So I won't go back into the past because there's enough information that'll be presented to you through a document. We are in 2024, and like Adam stated, we met with Dewberry, Howard, and Robert Packenger with the county. The tribe had a year budget, and you always start with your budget, looking at it and knowing our information through Suket, as well as five days a week, six days a week, five, you know, blah, 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 10-hour days, eight hours on Saturday. So they asked us if we could look at a six-month period to present to the board. So tribe came back, agreed to that, and then received an information back from Dewberry on behalf of, of the amount, the time, cut monitoring services, et cetera. We said absolutely not, we cannot agree to that. Or we can agree to this in this behalf. If you have one piece of equipment on wagon trail, because there is site from one end to the other, we've did a lot of investigation, we did a lot of clearing, removed our burials, removed over 100 and something thousand artifacts on this project, okay? That said, there was nothing there from the first folks, dock and engineering and environmental. We came aboard, we demonstrated, we worked closely with the lead Caltrans on behalf of this, as well as SHPO. The concurrence of agreements was, you know, you're doing ground disturbance, no matter what, you got a piece of equipment out there, what's it do? Ground disturbance. We worked closely with the county to also save funding. On behalf of Cal 1679 example, that's a huge feature that dates back to climate change. We had features that were in the bedrock, so when the equipment's coming in, they hit that bedrock, the material, it holes, and we do archaeological investigation. So when you want to get up to a amount of that, that saved millions and millions of dollars on this project, thus we move in our native stuff out of the way. So in behalf of this budget that you're seeing here is of untruth, the amount, maybe it can be true coming back to you guys every, what, so many months, another four months? I'm going to be honest with you here, you have to have a monitor and archaeologists of each area have worked for ground disturbance. Last year and year before, we were like chickens with our heads cut off for our county. Our tribe went ahead and were covering two, three places quickly versus having our natives in spots and archaeologists. We also work closely of just saying two natives and one archaeologist when you have a native and an archaeologist present. We did our best of saving. There's many months and hours that I never billed. Okay, but here today, we're here to be honest with all of you. There is equipment ready to run from Apollusa to Bonanza. If you want one piece of equipment, then okay, we'll do one monitor. But to let you know, we opposed the budget that's being presented to you, it's of untruth, and we will not be negotiable of cutting hourly rate of 30 something dollars less an hour, when we're at a certain rate with all agencies. And Howard tried to find ways of cutting it to save money. We are negotiable if everyone in this project. If everyone in the project can cut their rate of 30 something dollars an hour less, then we can come around the table. But as of right now, the tribe is not negotiable of the cut. And if there's no negotiations to be met, then again, with SHPO, the tribe, and Caltrans Transportation, then the project has to come to a halt until agreeable. They want to start on March 4th, we're here, we're ready to go.
Deborah, I'm sorry, we've exceeded the time, but we're going to, we're going to talk about this for a little while.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Robert, you want to come up and tell us what's going on?
Good morning. Let me introduce to you Howard Zabel from Dewberry. That amendment that you have in front of you is with our consultant Dewberry. I'm sorry that we're having this difficulty right now. As Deborah has said, we both have been working very hard to try to preserve this cultural history that's within the project. So there's been a lot of work, a lot of dialogue. We, the county, the team remains committed to preserving this cultural history that's in the area. We are also committed to honoring all the requirements that we have for the project through the environmental documents that are in place. We are supposed to honor all of those requirements, so there's no question about any of that. At the same time, we have to balance that work with what we have in our budgets. And so what we were working on was an amendment that took us forward in, in time with our estimates for about six months. There's still some unknowns. We have a schedule unknown from the contractor. We are still trying to resolve some things that they need to build. In other words, the wall that's in, that they have to build, there's going to be a change order there with the impact to the schedule. There's also going to be an area where we're going to raise the road to avoid impacting the, the cultural artifacts. But those remain currently, as of today, unknown, but we wanted to process this amendment to keep the cultural activities funded moving forward. We understand that if the level of effort is greater and, and we find that out, we'll have to come back to the board for another amendment. That's, that's something that we know that that will probably happen. Now, the issue with the rate is that we requested for justification for the rate. Of course, we're still trying to watch how we are with the budget. The rate that was provided to us is the one that Caltrans told us is the rate that's used. That's what we plugged into this estimate for the amendment, and that's right now the source of the issue. When we put these dollars in with our estimates, this amendment currently is within what we believed was the budgeted amounts that have been discussed with you in the past. The tribe has told us that there are updated rates. Caltrans is perhaps working on these updated rates, and we've told them that when we get these rates updated from Caltrans, we're ready and willing to honor whatever those rates are. They are, right now, the difference between what the tribe is requesting and what Caltrans has given us, the difference is about a 35% increase. We feel without the Caltrans telling us this is the rate, it's, there's no justification for it, and so then that difference would come from the room. For perspective, as far as we're talking about for the dollar amount, last year, the higher rate was approved, the rate that the tribe is wishing. And for about six months worth of work, the amount that was paid was 475,000, and $125,000 of that was that difference in the rate that was used last year. So that's the type of amount that we're looking at. But for now, as far as what we're trying to do with this amendment, it's an amendment with Dewberry, and we're just trying to keep the funding in the, for the cultural work that needs to be taking place right now.
Questions from the board? Supervisor stopper, you look like you got a question on your mind?
I have lots of questions, but I was wondering if Dewberry had anything to say prior to me, maybe something will be answered. I, I don't know.
Sure. Members of the board, Howard Zabel with Dewberry. So just a little bit of history on this. So we were, you know, late last year, you know, I guess first I'd say that, you know, the last probably eight months I've been involved in the project, I think we've developed a really good working relationship with, with the tribe, with Deborah and Adam. Appreciate the, the partnership in doing what we all know should be done and has to be done. So late last year, you know, we, we got together to talk about an amendment and the level of effort that'd be required for the, for this next construction season, 2024. So what was discussed was, what was discussed and agreed upon was, let's estimate six months of earth-moving activity. That's the earth-disturbing activity, that's when the monitors are needed, right? Just a word on, on next year and the schedule, we don't have the full schedule for next year yet. There, there are changes, and there's things in flux, there are changes that are happening right now. You heard Robert talk about the, the retaining wall at PRT7. That has been designed, Caltrans is reviewing it, the contractor's pricing it. We don't have schedule revision on that yet. So what we are doing is we are estimating as best we can what we think, how we think the season is going to go with 2024. So the assumption was six months of earth-disturbing activity. The assumption was, was two monitors, one at each end of the project. And with that, this was, I think, November 30th, we had this discussion with, with the tribe. Couple weeks later, we received an amendment request. The assumptions in there were higher than what we had discussed in, in terms of level of effort, in terms of days, in terms of number of monitors. So we, you know, there was communication back and forth. We met with, Robert and I met with Deborah, I think it was somewhere around Christmas time, the week between Christmas and New Year's. We, we talked about the level of effort, we talked about the rate, and we agreed on, in principle, on a, on a different lower level of effort. And we also, on, on the rate issue, we referenced that, you know, Caltrans had approved this rate. I haven't been involved with this project from day one, so I'm coming into it, I see this new rate, much higher than what I'm used to seeing. It raised the flag for me, so I have to do due diligence and make sure we can justify that rate. 30, 35% increase, that's pretty considerable. So with that, we, you know, we did ask Caltrans, what is the, what's your rate, what's your pre-rate for culture monitors? And their rate was, you know, significantly lower, right? 30% lower than this, than this ask. So we needed to get this item in front of the board to keep construction moving next year, so, or this year. Schedule is right now, March 4th, contractors plan on remobbing and starting earthwork activities, so we have to, we have to get this underway. Anyway, there have been discussions back and forth, just haven't been able to come to an agreement on this rate. So our thought process was, we know we need to, we need to get going with, with something. We need to, we need to get something to keep the job going. Did my, my best estimate on what I think was a reasonable assumption based on what we know now, and that was, that was less than what we, what we discussed back in late December. The level of effort was not much less. Just to give you some guidance here, some perspective, 120 days was the initial assumption, so that, that went down to 115. 26 weekends, it went down to 18. So these were not huge, huge cuts. Trying to be, just make the best estimate of what we think is going to be needed. So that's, that's where we are.
Thank you. Supervisor stopper, you had some questions?
I don't know. First of all, I want to say that, you know, it's valued that we have the tribe within the county working on this in, in the area, and, you know, it's, thank you, Deborah and your coworkers for having the proper credentials and education to be able to facilitate doing this as we move forward. Now, it's a, you know, you brought up that, there's an enormous amount of cultural artifacts. I mean, the, the sites that were found along that area have been far more than we're estimated as we move forward, and the cost has been quite a bit more than we predicted from the very beginning, and we've had to move money around. So with that, you already answered part of my question. Caltrans going rate at this time is what we have in here.
That's correct.
And if there's any negotiations or proposed changes or amendments to that, that those haven't been finalized at this time?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's the state accepted rate as, let's say, per diem, you know, within, you know, the idea or conception of it, you know, and generally the state accepted rates higher than the federal rate when it comes to these type of services?
I'm not, I, I can't say that for sure, but it sounds, sounds like a reasonable assumption.
Right. Yeah, in most cases it is, not all cases. Consideration, you know, it's valued that the tribe's doing it, I would like to keep that money within our local area. They say if we don't come to an agreement, that work will stop, and the state has no ability for other cultural resources as we move forward. Is that true?
I, I believe that to be true.
Now, we were quite a ways through, we do have the wall that Mr. Packenger brought up and you brought up. A majority of the sites, because we talked about the 26 weekends going to 18 weekends and everything else, at this time, I believe a majority of the sites have been found that are within the scope of the work being done at this point, working in forward.
That, that's my understanding. We've never, you never completely know, but based on the information we have now, that yes.
So with that, with that anticipation, moving forward, because we know things change in it very fluid, because it's been changing constantly, if there's a change to this going forward into the future, we will be brought back another amendment to this budget, and we will have to approve anything changing on it moving forward if there's additional cost?
That's correct.
Okay, that's enough questions for me right now.
Any other questions from the board, or jumping? Dewberry was responsible for managing this project on behalf of the county, correct?
That is correct.
So you guys are responsible for drawing up the budget for this project, correct?
That is correct.
And last fall, you came to Dewberry through Matt, came to this board and said, if you get $14 million, we could finish this project, right?
That's correct.
So this board, from three of us, spent two days in Dantara County, excuse me, Madera County, making this happen. When the budget was drawn up, this contract is currently between. When the budget was drawn up, this contract is currently between Duberri and, and the New Rock Tribe, correct?
That's correct.
And so when you did this, you did the budget, you did the budget, looking at the rates that you were currently paying at that time, which was thirty-five percent more than what Caltrans reimbursement is, right?
I, I, I'm not sure.
I am, so I'm willing to say yes.
Okay.
The, so you put together, so you had this budget that you could, you developed, that included the rate that was higher than what Caltrans did. So tell me, why are you coming, and maybe really frank.
Yeah.
Fourteen million bucks was a big push for this county, and we really went to the line to get this done. So tell me why you put together a budget for this project that included the rate, which I assume included the rate that you're currently paying. And now you're not, now you bring it back to this board to solve what I see as your problem. So tell me why this is my problem and not your problem for Duberri, since you're in charge of managing this project?
Sure, so I, I, I respect that, understand the, the, you know, your, your position. I think when, when budgets were developed for the, for the additional money, the, the assumption for cultural monitoring was, was less than what, what the request, what the estimate is from, you know, from the tribal monitors. So when that budget was developed, there were numbers in there. You know, the, the, what the ask was, was just, it, it was far beyond anything we could have.
But you were paying one thirty an hour at the time, that you did this budget. And then we did another budget that had, at the Caltrans rate, that's hard to imagine. It sounds like we just figured out the Caltrans rate, so my guess is you budgeted at one thirty.
So I don't know that the, when the budget was established, I don't know level of detail that was, that was done for establishing the budget for, as part of that fourteen million.
Well, I would hope that Duberri would have intimate knowledge of the budget, since you guys are in charge of it and you made a commitment that you were going to get this done for the price that you put forward. Go ahead.
May, may I just want, one other thing? You know, just, just in talks with Matt moving forward and the, you know, we're, working towards getting this project finished and, you know, there, there, there's change orders, which we all have to understand and which is part of the contract, what, you know, on expansion of the budget moving forward. And we, you know, that, that being understood, there was extra money put into the for, you know, prediction on the budget at that time, because we were understanding that we already were exponentially above budget. And so at that point, you know, predicting conservatively, we would throw in a certain percentage on that. And are we already above that percentage? Because that, that was part of the original budget, from my understanding, when we put it forward.
Uh, we're not, but with the, you know, with the amendment request, we, you know, we would be above the numbers that were assumed there. You know, I will say some of what, what happened after that, you know, after that, you know, that fourteen million, what happened, you know, late last year in December with CAS six and thirty-nine. Lot more, you know, lot more artifacts, resources discovered. So this is, it, it really, I, I understand the, the concern. You know, at the same time, this is a, a moving target. We have the, you know, the, the reality of the, you know, of law and what is required to be done. We're doing our best to manage everything and control costs as, as best as we can.
Supervisor, stopper?
Well, to be adequate about this, or, originally, we were told by Duberri that we only needed ten million dollars to finish this project. Dennis Agar from Caltrans was the one that pumped it up to fourteen million dollars. So actually, it's four million dollars over the original estimate that we were given by Duberri to finish this project. So, so now we're saying, if we don't do what we're doing here and we're going to have to come back for a change order, we're already going to be over budget. So, so if we were going to do it at ten million, how are we going to fourteen million? If we would have settled for ten, we would be not even close to completing the project. So what, what are the adequate numbers here? I mean, we're not going to be able to go back to CTC. We were very, very lucky, as you know, to get the money we got from them.
I do, I do.
And, and how fast we got it. They wanted to push it off until October. But Dennis pushed for us and pushed up to fourteen million dollars. So I'm, I'm a little bit at a loss as to what is happening here and is fourteen going to be enough?
And, yeah, it, it, this is a moving target. There are, there are.
Can I jump in there for a second?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
The end of us next.
Oh, go ahead.
Sure.
You want to defer? I'm sorry.
I, I, I disagree, I think that, I've been a part of this for a year and the goalposts change every single time. And I, I agree with my fellow supervisors, I just feel that, that, that we've gone, not me personally, but the, the representatives that went down to fight for that money have gone above and beyond to get Duberri what they asked for, and Duberri sold it to us in countless meetings, that they would be able to do it. And it feels like you're throwing it back at us right now.
Supervisor, ponder?
I, my question is actually for Robert. So in all of these references that the board keeps bringing up, during those times, I also asked about RIM and how much this was going to hit RIM. It never was disclosed or clarified that we have been overcompensating and taking money out of RIM to fill this. And I know some of it was to get this project moving and we were trying to do what was really, what was good, not what we, those rates were from Caltrans. So why wasn't that fully, when, even when you brought the CIP, why was that not clarified in the budget with the RIM funds? Because that's been one of the biggest things, is so we don't have to touch RIM. Yes, I understand way before most of us were even on this board, you know, and even prior to you, county committed a lot of money out of RIM, but then, but that, we worked very hard to get the work programmed. We spent years programming this money and we are now at, we are now here with this amount of money. And I do feel, you know, I think everyone went to the table in December and were honored, but why wasn't that triggered? Why wasn't that red flag that the tribe had been getting the subsidies or somehow others getting the subsidies out of RIM? We were filling the gap of that without the, the full reimbursements of Caltrans. I mean, because at the end of the day, if we go forward and we build, we've got to find out where that difference is going to come, because Caltrans isn't going to reimburse me based on the, based on what is already programmed for this. And so why, I guess to you, why wasn't that, how was that never a red flag? Especially time and time again, when I kept asking about RIM and the impact of RIM?
The work that was done last year was, no money has come out of RIM yet. And for that difference in that work that we discussed, that was all applied to the invoicing to Caltrans. So we've been, we've been invoicing Caltrans for all of the costs. There are some local match requirements that we have, that's coming out of the RIM. Nothing's been spent there yet. And we also have some right-of-way requirements, again, that's not been spent. I have a report that I'm hoping to put in your hands that shows you those numbers, so you could have all that. But right now, we haven't, we haven't pulled anything out of RIM yet. So there's only commitments.
Still have one point nine million dollars that we.
That's still in there.
Which was more than what you originally asked for.
Yeah.
The co-op agreements.
More in there and we bumped it up.
One point nine.
Yeah, those are for the co-op agreements.
Okay, so my other question is, and it's scaring me a little bit, is comments and then is, moving forward, if you're not able to get something from Caltrans, because we do have this fourteen million dollars that are already programmed and halting another year of this project is not in the best interest of anyone. It's actually going to cost a lot more. And how soon will we know it will be resolved with the tribe? Or are we going to have to ask Caltrans for recommendations of an alternative monitoring? Which I don't want to go down, we should not be leaving that outside of this county. But at the same time, the cost to stop and to be threatened to, to stop this project this far down the line is not something I have any appetite for. And if we have to do research outside, I want to know, because that, and it's, it hurts to say that, but we, we can't be leaving fourteen million dollars on the line when the three of us have been best to know about going down to the state, getting this money.
We're not contemplating anything like that going to another, the, the time that that would take and the complications of that kind of discussion, no, we're not contemplating anything like that.
I just wanted to ask, if Robert, you would clarify what RIM funds are for the audience, as well as what RIM funds are normally used for?
Okay, those are, the road impact mitigation fee program was put together in two thousand and four. There were certain roads that were included within that road impact mitigation fee program. And so the impact of new development is supposed to pay for increased capacity on those roads. That's how the RIM fee for each residence was determined, based on a cost estimate and the distribution of the cost to the new development. So for the wagon trail, there was, the right, the wagon trail was identified as a project within the RIM program. And that, that's been there ever since, so that's why those road impact mitigation fee funds that are collected from new development can be used for that project. Those funds can't be used for maintenance, they can't be used for any roads that are not on that list. And for, you know, currently, most of those funds are being used for the wagon trail project.
Supervisor, stopper?
Well, you know, we just went over, because you, earlier you brought up, you know, the total for, for, for last year, which my question on last year is whether it was a, you know, fiscal or annual year when you talk about budget?
It was the annuals, it was a six month.
So we're just talking about twenty-three, twenty twenty-three?
Three.
That, that, that said, you said four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar total, which was a hundred and twenty-five thousand over, which you said at that point would come out of RIM, but it hasn't been applied at this time.
No.
And because that money came in, so you did the draw from the fourteen million that came in to be able to sustain it. That said, to follow up, originally I said, you know, I support keeping it in county. It's valuable that we have a local tribe members that are able to be able to facilitate the work. And I agree with Ms. Bollendorf, as, as she said. And, you know, going to outside cultural resources, I don't believe that they're really available at this time from the state level and, and everything we have to go through. I, I don't think we would be held up forever. So, which brings me to the next question. And if councilors, I ask Deborah a question, because.
Chair, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, sir. Deborah, do you, do you entail, if, if this cannot be resolved, or do you intend?
We want to resolve this, we want to resolve this.
Do you intend to hold it up if they aren't going to work with you?
It's not about holding it up. I, I want to clarify that when they're talking about this percentage going up, Howard looked at a thing years ago when I would do work for the county. And it was very low rate. Tribe approved me to do these little side areas at a certain rate. Our rate is all the overhead and everything. And what happened here is our rates are the same with P G N E, C C W D, everyone, okay? Now, the percentage he's talking about is for the year twenty twenty-four, which is a three-point-two approval through the federal. We have no problem staying at the rate we were before through negotiations, okay, like we have been doing. We're not here to hold the project up. And, and to clarify, you can't go out and ask for other tribes to come in or other sources. This is our area, we're here to work together. We sat at that board meeting with you, right, to get this millions of dollars to help pay back. We're not here to stop your project, okay? We, we want to move forward where we're successful together.
Thank you.
But as well as not taking funding away from us through that hourly rate. And that's just not paying just for employee, that's paying for all the other things that come into play with business.
Oh, thank you, you answered my question.
I just have to say one more thing, Caltrans, Caltrans has shared, I'm sorry, Caltrans has shared with Robert and Howard Friday at a private little Zoom meeting. Our negotiations with Caltrans is what happened is one of their firm folks did not present the increase yearly. And finally, that has came into effect.
The adjustment, yeah.
Yes, and they're working on that at the same time.
I hear you and I'm, so, final question, Robert and Duberri, is they had a going rate that they're willing to stay at, and right now you're reducing that rate moving forward and you're trying to reduce the rate as opposed to what we've been paying the last, ever since we started this project?
Not, not ever since, not, not ever since.
But while, while we.
Since the last amendment.
Yes.
But we were paying them and now you're trying, and you're turning around and reducing it. Just, that was my question.
Just one last comment, then we'll call for public comment on this issue. You know, I got to tell you, when we're this far down the road and the engineers leading this say things are fluid and we're trying to figure that out, that is no bueno. I mean, we are committed, we are not, that makes me incredibly nervous. And I do look forward to seeing your last contract amendment to see how we dealt with the cultural resources. Because it kind of feels like you probably already had that in your budget and you're asking for additional funds. Or, we'll have to dig into that deeper. I'm going to call for public comment on this item. Is there anybody in front of the public who'd like to speak on this? See, nobody, is there anybody online?
There are no online requests.
All right, in that case, I will bring it back to the board for discussion or, or action. Anybody have a comment they want to make on this or a motion?
What are the choices with that? Because right now, they're asking for more money, we're saying, why is it more money? And then we're saying, you know, I'm hearing that they're reducing the amount that we've been paying according to the last amendment. And we would, you know, my thought is like, keep paying what we're paying them. But then that would cost more than the budget adjustment here according to what they're paying for. I, I, I make a, I make, I mean.
Is this going to hold, hold up the project if you table it to bring it back?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know what to do then.
So, another question, supervisor, ponder?
To keep the project going because of the demob cost and remobbing cost, if we delay that, that will hit us. I'll approve, I would move to move this item on the contingency that, Robert, we get back in front of this board as soon as possible to discuss all the concerns that the board has right now.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion on the table, supervisor.
I'll sit.
The motion is second. Yeah, I just, I, 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 I would like to, I feel like putting the gun to our head here to keep this project moving. I'm actually quite upset that we're doing this in January, especially since we could have been doing this in the fall when we did our budget adjustments. But it's neither here nor there, we have a motion and a second on the table. Call, we'll call vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
No.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Three fifths? No.
Passes through two. Thank you. Thank you. All right, on to regular agenda. Thank you all for being patient. Stacy, will you read us a second?
Yes. Item eighteen, informational item. Administrative office, receive a presentation from LDA Partners, Inc. regarding the Phase One programming and conceptual design for the new animal shelter.
Jamie, are you introducing this?
I am. Good morning, Chair and Honorable Members of the Board, Jamie Andriola, Administration Department. I'm here today to introduce Eric from LDA Partners. As you know, the county in April contracted with LDA Partners to do Phase One, the programming and conceptual design for the new animal shelter. So, I will let Eric lead the way.
Eric?
All right, give me a minute here while I figure out.
Hang on a second. And if I could remind everybody, speak directly into the microphones. People are having a hard time hearing.
All right, good morning, members of the board. Happy to be here today and talk to you about the results of our first phase, our Phase One for the programming and conceptual design of the future Calaveras County Animal Shelter. So, I wanted to start out by kind of explaining a little bit of the process that we did over the past few months and how we got to here. So, kind of give you the Reader's Digest version, if you will, of A to Z on how we did our work and what we're presenting to you today. So, the first thing that we do is we want to establish what the project goals are. And that, those goals will be different for any individual. We look at a facility serving modern needs. The facility needs to be durable because of the extreme abuse that it takes. We want to make sure we're using quality materials so that we have a good, we're not busting the budget in maintenance five years down the road, if you will. We need to be energy compliant for State of California Building Codes. But maybe more importantly, we need to have comprehensive animal care. And we need to be welcoming to the general public and the staff. So, a lot of times, we forget about the staff that actually has to work in an animal shelter and we focus on the animals themselves. But we really need to have a cohesive meeting of the minds, if you will. And so, when we start animal shelters, I really start looking at three core principles is what I kind of establish our parameters. So, that first principle is what I refer to as the city and county perspective. And that's what we're mandated to do by the State of California. So, there are certain services that you're required to do by state by mandate. Those could be animal care, animal control, et cetera. Some of them you may do in-house, some of them you may contract out. The next perspective is what I refer to as the moral perspective. And that's what we should be doing for animal welfare. How should we be treating our animals, our dogs, our cats, and the animals that we bring into the shelter that may not necessarily be mandated by law? And that third perspective is really what I refer to as, you know, bringing those two environments together. We have the human environment where the staff and the general public comes in. And then we have the animal environment. And they have to be melded together. They have to be cohesive. We have two different species that, you know, can't talk to each other. So, we have to be able to understand their movements and their stress levels and how they interact with each other. So, all that is really difficult to do. Because when we're talking about animal shelters, we're talking about different types of building projects. So, we have a custody environment, much like a jail. So, we have to have hardened surfaces that can be baseball bat proof or are not proof, if you will. Then we have to have a medical environment because we have to treat animals with medical care. So, a lot of times, we have sterile surfaces, medical gases, just like you would in a medical clinic. And then we have to take those two very institutional types of projects and mix them together and create a more retail environment so that the community becomes, it becomes a community asset. And so, it's not an institutional building. It becomes a community hub where people can come together, they can rejoice from the animals, you can actually rent it out, you can have parties, events at the shelter. So, we're really trying to create a place where the community comes together as opposed to where we just house animals. And that's how we start our project. So, the first thing I want to do is tell you about how we established our program. So, the program is the basis, like the building blocks of how we build a facility. And we look at lots of different things. So, we start with understanding what the right size for your facility is. Your facility has a specific need that is different, that's going to be in Sacramento. That's different, that's going to be in Modesto, or different, that's going to be in San Diego. So, we want to make sure we're right sizing the facility for your specific needs. So, we look and gather statistical data from the past. How have you treated animals? How many adoptions have you had out? How many animals do you bring in? What's the average length of stay? So, we take that data and we extrapolate out for projected needs for now and then looking in five years, ten years down the road. So, we take a look at all your data. We make sure that we're addressing your specific needs. We're listening to your staff. We're listening to your community to making sure that what we're putting together is really the needs for Calaveras County and not another jurisdiction. So, you see on the screen here some of the ways we do it. We use building blocks to identify how different places can go together. We look at pictures, what's kind of like a word association, if you will. And then we put that all together into a written program. So, what you see on the screen right now is actually the program for Calaveras County. This is, this is the needs and the wishes for your staff and your community to build a new modern shelter. And we've broken it out into different areas. So, you'll see we have public areas, animal habitats, areas for staff and support, and intake and adoption. And so, we break all those areas out and we apply how big that space should be. So, for instance, the very first line on there is the lobby, three hundred and fifty square feet. And then for all these spaces, we apply a multiplier. And that's referred to as an area factor or a grossing factor. And that accommodates for wall thicknesses, duct chases, utility chases, things like that. And so, you'll notice as we go to different areas, different subheadings may have different area factors. And that's because of the types of materials that we need to use in these individual spaces or the mechanical or plumbing systems within. And so, with this, we have an overall project, a program of roughly around ten thousand square feet. That's if we can build everything all at once. That's the needs that we've identified for Calaveras County. So, what we need to do now is look at how we put those together in a cohesive plan for your specific needs. But before we do that, I want to give you a little bit of background on your current shelter. These are images of your current shelter. So, the top is the kind of dog habitats, the bottom is cat habitats. And what we see here is something that's very typical of a shelter that was built in the kind of early to mid seventies. But maybe most importantly, what we see here does not meet in any way, shape, or form the current standards of care for animal, animal care. And that has changed tremendously over the past few decades. Even fifteen years ago, we're doing things a little bit differently now. So, as we look at different animal shelters and our standards, one thing that's kind of hard to, a little bit hard to understand is if you look in the building code, you're not going to see a section in the building code that says, I need to have X number of square feet for a dog, or X number of square feet for a cat. The standards for animal care are established by different trade entities. So, the SBCA, or the American Society of Veterinary Care, or UC Davis Court School of Veterinary Medicine, they're the ones who establish the standards. And how they're enforced is through litigation, much like ADA is enforced through litigation. And so, those standards have become the de facto norm throughout the United States. And so, those are always evolving, much like ADA does. You know, every building code cycle, you see ADA upgrades. But those standards have evolved over time, and so that's what we're using now. So, they have established a minimum size for dog habitats, for cat habitats, air changes, plumbing, things like that. And so, we look at those current standards and look at your current facility. Some of the things that we see in dog habitats are channeling fencing, drains that slope out towards the staff member. That promotes contamination and disease because we have fecal matter or other things that are bacteria in the kennels that can get on people's feet. And that can get transferred to another location. And so, for dog habitats, we always want to see drains that flow towards the back. We see materials that are non-absorptive. So, while we may have a concrete or concrete masonry base, we always put epoxy or a non-absorbent surface over the top. Your facility right here is concrete. While concrete is very durable, it's very absorbent. So, anytime an animal urinates or defecates in a kennel, that is being absorbed in the concrete. And once it gets in that concrete, it is impossible to get out. Your cat habitats here, we have a lot of back-of-house program areas, which we see in the middle of the adoption area. And so, we try to separate those out. We try to keep where our adoptions are separate from where our medical and back-of-house or operational program aspects take place. So, as we look at new shelters, we have different ideas of what we'd like to do. As I mentioned before, we try to make this a place for community connectivity or a place where people want to come to the facility. And that starts at the front door, at the first impression, if you will. So, some of the things we'd like to do is make a good first impression, and that the entry. So, what you see on the screen are some examples of different shelters throughout the country. Some of those are relatively close to San Andreas here. And we don't need to be this elaborate. But basically, what we're trying to do is create a patio or a place of entry for people to come in. And so, when they're bringing an animal in or taking an animal out, the animal has a chance to adapt from the inside to vehicle where they may be coming from. And that helps them put that at ease. When we look at cat habitats, cats are, in the sheltering world, a little bit more fun because they're very reactive to human interaction. And so, we like to see some cats, you know, up front, and so you can get up front and personal. So, you can see some images here of modern cat habitats where people can actually go into the space, play with them, but they're very, very visual from the front door. Cats also like to climb, they like to hide out, they like to interact. They're, so we see different habitats and the different images on the screen here where cats can go hide, where they can climb on a wall. We also like to be able to put them inside and outside. And so, there may be a spot where the cat can go through an animal door to the outside. It's still enclosed, but it can still play and get the natural air. So, from a habitat standpoint, we'd like to see about fifteen square feet per cat. And all cat habitats and dog habitats, I should say, are always divided. So, you may have a habitat as a whole, which would be fifteen square feet, but it's divisible where you have, where a cat might use a litter or food that's separate from where it actually lives. That's for disease control and let the animal have some privacy. The same thing applies for dogs. We'd like to see double-sided and vertical and horizontal separations in cat habitats. Most like all animals, we'd like to have natural light and visual enrichment. And that's one of the things that's really lacking in the current facility. Now, before I get into dogs, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about noise control. Because noise control in dog habitats is paramount. There's been lots of studies, we've commissioned many of them over the years, how to control dog noise. You know, one of the first studies that we commissioned, when we took, had our acoustical engineer go into an animal space and they measured how loud the animals were, they found that it was actually louder than MD-80 taking off. So, that's how loud that space can actually be, louder than a jet airplane taking off. So, you can imagine the stress that the animals feel in that space, also the staff that has to work there. If you're a staff member and you are constantly just harassed by that amount of noise, it's going to take a toll. So, we can do some things for dog habitats that don't cost anything, or cost very little. The first thing is to have the number of dogs. If we had a room of about twenty dogs and we just have that, then we can reduce about eight to ten decibels from there. And that's easy to do. So, our dog habitats, we try to keep no bigger than eight to ten dogs in there. We look at how we can put noise-absorbed materials in spaces. We typically like to see them on the ceiling because we get more bang for our buck that way. We get more sound control for our dollar. We also want to make sure that we have sound separation. So, the image on the left-hand side of your screen kind of shows a holding area where you may have a wall between those two animal habitats. There's always a sound break that goes all the way up to the ceiling. That keeps noise from traveling above the ceiling plane into the next room. If we have a violation of that wall, noise will find the hole and get through. And that's going to create a larger noise in the next space. So, what you see here on the screen are examples of dog habitats, modern dog habitats. And some of these are, again, are shelters that are very close. I think actually all these images here are for shelters that are either in Sacramento, Out Grove, or a Modesto area. So, as I mentioned to you before, dog habitats are divided, much like the cats' habitats are. A typical dog habitat is four by six feet times two. So, each half of that dog habitat is going to be four by six feet. It's divided by a stainless steel guarantee door so that if you need to clean one half of the kennel, you can shut that door, move the animal to one side, clean it, and then you can repeat that process for the other side. One of the things with dogs, and depending upon the dog that you have, we sometimes have larger kennels because of the size of the dog. While cats are typically one size, dogs range in lots of different sizes. We're running from Chihuahuas to Great Danes. And so, the habitats that we use sometimes need to be a little bit bigger. And they'd also be used in more flexible scenarios where you might have a dog that has puppies. So, we have a lot of flexibility in our dog habitats. We typically try to have interior and exterior dog habitats. That's one of the standards. If we need to establish cost-saving measures, we can move those dog habitats all indoors, which is what you see in the upper-left-hand image here, where the habitats are all indoors. But in order to get that indoor-outdoor feel, we've created large garage doors, if you will. So, when the weather's nice, we can open those up, have the weather flow come in and have a nice breeze, and it creates more of an interior-exterior atmosphere. Our kennels are typically stainless steel. They always have tops on them. And as I mentioned to you before, they have epoxy coatings around. That's to keep different fluids from being absorbed into the masonry or concrete. One of the things I should also mention about the kennels is they're very plumbing and mechanical system-intensive. So, every side of that kennel, it has a drain, and that's to be able to clean it. The air changes that we typically see in animal habitats are fifteen air changes per hour. Again, that's a standard that's been set by those various trades. So, what that really means is every four minutes, we're completely changing out the air. We're exhausting the air. We're taking it from the outside, we're conditioning it down to a tolerable environment, and then we're exhausting it right back out into the atmosphere again. Unlike this room right here, where we're taking that air, we're conditioning and recirculating it. Animal habitats, we exhaust the air back out, and that's to prevent disease contamination. And so, that's one of the things that makes animal shelters a little bit unique in the building world because we have to use different types of mechanical systems and plumbing systems that we don't necessarily use in the human world. Some of the other spaces that a lot of the public may not necessarily see but are necessarily, or are needed for a new facility, areas for laundry. Laundry is unbelievably intense in an animal facility. It happens all the time. So, we use washers and dryers that are commercial grade because the residential ones won't last a week because there's so much laundry that we're going through. We have dishwashing and food prep. We typically have stainless steel counters for mixing food. This is dog, or we have washing components, much like you would in your own kitchen, so dishwashers. They can be a residential grade or commercial grade. It really kind of depends on the facility. And then we have areas for support. That's animal intake procedures, grooming, could be medical care or separation, isolation of the animals. Other spaces that we see now in modern shelters, we typically always see a multipurpose facility. Generally speaking, then maybe that's be a room that may be the size of a typical classroom. That can be used for vaccination clinics, staff education, various community meetings, and maybe more importantly, revenue generation. So, you can rent it out for, to the community. We like to see spaces for exotics and small mammals. Just because we typically think of dogs and cats doesn't mean that you don't have geckos or snakes, or birds, or guinea pigs, or hamsters. They all kind of come in. I always tell people, I have two cats at home, but I also have a gecko. And so, if something were to happen to us, we need a place for that gecko to go. So, we always make sure we have spots for the animals that we don't necessarily think about all the time. And then, one of the other things I always want to mention here, as I kind of mentioned to you before, I alluded to in the building systems with the mechanical and plumbing, we have different, we need to make sure that our building is durable. So, we have wall protection. So, you can see in the right-hand corner, you have wall protection just like you would in the hospital because you have lots of carts and carriers that kind of come into the walls, and they always run into the walls. We make sure that we have wall, floor protection. The shelters will take a beating. They will get very, very, very used. So, we need to make sure the materials that we use are extremely durable. And as I mentioned to you before, the fifteen air changes per hour, that is very unique. Again, that's not necessarily what you would see in the human world, but it's a standard in the animal sheltering world. And while we've talked about the building itself, we need to talk a little bit about the outside of the building. So, we have, need to have spaces where people can take the animal and interact with it before it becomes adopted. Or if you're holding an animal for a while, it needs to be able to get out and run around a little bit. So, we have spaces for dogs can kind of run around, either through the staff can take them out or a potential adoptee can take them out. Cats like to have that interior out. Cats like to have that interior-outdoor environment as well. And we want to make that almost like a parklight setting so people enjoy playing with an animal. Though those are the fun parts of the shelter, but we also have what I refer to as kind of not-so-fun. So it's the parking lot. It's a freezer where we have to store dead animals that sometimes we have to take care of, where we have staff parking or trailers or emergency vehicles. That's where we refer to as the back of house. That's where we don't want the public to go. That's really more for staff. And we also typically see salary ports, you know, much like in a custody environment, we need to have an area where we can transfer, you know, a person or an animal from a vehicle into the facility, and they will get out over time, or, you know, every now and then. So we want to make sure we have a salary port so if an animal does get out in the transfer between a vehicle and the intake, that we're not having to run over the back 40 to try to capture it again. We need to keep it contained. Now, as part of your current shelter, we also typically look at your current large animal holding. So we talked about dogs, talked about cats, you know, exotics and small mammals, but you also have large animals. Those are horses, goats, pigs, things like that, especially in rural areas, you see a lot more of this. We took a look at your current large animal, and it's adequate. I'm not necessarily thinking that we need to do too much. We would like to see maybe a barn in the future, but generally speaking, we can maintain with what we have there. So that's one of the things that we can kind of keep. On the screen, what you see right here are examples of, these are examples from our construction documents, other materials. So one of the things that always kind of come up when you talk about animal shelters, people say, well, why are they so expensive? Why do you have to use these types of materials? And so as I mentioned to you before, it's because of the durability and the need to maintaining that animal environment. So on the left-hand side, you see a section cutting through a typical dog kennel where you have a CMU wall that's separated by a guillotine door. So you have an outdoor adoption side and an indoor adoption side. The upper right-hand corners, you can see how we've established taking a sound break from where the ceiling plane is all the way to the underside of the roof deck. That's to keep, that's for noise mitigation and to maintain that that sound isolation between spaces. And we do that whether we have wood walls or metal stud frame walls or CMU walls. And then the lower right-hand picture, that's an image of or detail of how that drain system works. So you'll see we have two drains in one dog habitat, and those are typically placed back by that guillotine door. And so when the kennel is washed, all the effluent can go back towards that one drain. It never comes towards you, it goes toward the back. And again, that's for disease control. So those are the things we typically look at for animal shelters. Now let's come back and look at your facility and the recommendations that we have for your specific facility. We looked at two specific sites. One is the existing site off of Jeff Tuttle, right in front of the courthouse. And also, we looked at another site which is a little bit up on the hill, kind of overlooking the courthouse, if you will. So we've identified them as Site 1 and 2. Site 2, that's where the existing facility is located, and that's our preferred site. And there's a few reasons why. When we're looking at different sites, we wanted to make sure we evaluated them both for existing utilities, or if we had to bring new utilities in, we looked at what we might have to do for grading, for roads, access, et cetera, fire lanes, things like that. And then the public access. How does the general public get to it? Is it noticeable for the general public? So with an animal shelter, we don't want to be out of sight, out of mind. We want to be front and center so the general public knows where we're at and we actually get people to the facility. So, and with both of these sites, we looked at how we might potentially phase the facility. Animal shelters are expensive projects, and so knowing we may have to phase it over time, we needed to look at how the phasing would apply in both of these sites. So what you see on your screen right now is our preferred site and our preferred building option, or how the building would lay out in a full build-out. So we come in off of Jeff Tuttle into a public parking lot, and we've kind of oriented our project to be over the existing, the administration area. Your current facility is made up of a few, several different modulators. You have a modular for administration, a modular for cats, and you have a permanent structure for the dogs. And so what we're proposing to do for a new facility is to build over the administration modular site. Because it's modular, we can easily be relocated during construction, and it's the most kind of front and center and most cost-effective from utilities and infrastructure standpoint. So we have identified the building and they're kind of color-coded where the pink is more administration and public lobby. The orange in the front here, that is the multipurpose. The green area is in the cats. The blue is the dogs. And then we have our support area, which is in between. And the support area is centered to, in between the dogs and the cats because that's where the back-of-house work occurs, if you will. That's the intake areas. That's where the food storage occurs. That's where washing, things like that occur. And to have that center where we're located makes the building more efficient so we can reduce the cost for mechanical systems, plumbing systems, et cetera. We have areas for staff parking and salary ports for when they bring animals in, and trash enclosure and freezer. One of the things that we like about this site right here and the building placement is that we still maintain access to the large animal holding, which is a little bit up on the hill. In the future, we also have a spot where we could build a future clinic that may be several years down the road, but from a master planning standpoint, wanted to make sure that all of our bases were covered. Now, I mentioned to you a little bit about phasing. So as we talk about the dollars and cents of what it costs for an animal facility, we really looked at what are your immediate needs right now? And it became very apparent looking at your current facility, the immediate needs are the dog housing. The dog housing is in the most dish repair and the most need. So what we're looking at really doing when we organize the facility is finding a way that can be easily phased and easily added on to. So the area that's highlighted in yellow, that represents intake and dog housing. And that's what we're going to recommend to you as a first phase because that takes care of the immediate need. And if we put it there, we can still kind of maintain with somewhat ease the existing administration module. We may have to move it a little bit, but we can still maintain our site. And by doing so, that's going to reduce our initial cost. And so this is where we start talking about dollars and cents. We looked at building costs from two perspectives, and this may be a little bit small to read. I can give you the highlights here. But as we look at costs for the construction, we looked at both, one, just building the dog areas only, and then the second part was to build the entire facility. So we apply cost per square foot for all these different spaces. Now, one of the benefits of doing shelters throughout the state of California and have active animal shelter projects is we can have real-time pricing and we talk to our contractors constantly. Ultimately, the contractor is going to be the ultimate authority of the costing. And so when we talk to our contractors, we talk to contractors that build animal shelters, ones that build animal shelters currently, so that we have accurate pricing in the real world and the real marketplace right now. And so what we're seeing are project costs, if we just do the dogs here for intake support for those housing areas and for the dogs, including the site, a total project cost of about $7 million. That's broken down between the hard cost of the facility and the soft cost. So the hard cost of a facility, that's what I would expect the bid to open up from a contractor on bid day. And you'll see that that number is right around $5 million. The rest of the project is uncovered by soft cost. So soft costs are FFNE, that's fixtures, furnishing, and equipment, permit fees, design fees, special inspection fees, utility fees, things like that. You'll also notice if you squint down on the image here, I've also established project contingencies. So I have escalation contingency of 5%, a construction contingency at 10%, another design contingency at 2.5%. That's what gets us to the total project cost of $7 million. What's that? For the first phase, correct. That was the yellow highlighted area. We also did an estimate for the full build-out, and that's what this sheet represents. So in here where we had the dog areas, like we just talked about, we also have areas for the staff, the administration, multipurpose, the cats, et cetera. And what you'll see on the bottom line here is you have a construction hard cost of roughly $8 million, a project soft cost of just under $2 million, for a total project cost of about 10.8. So that's the difference between that Phase 1, which we're recommending now, and the total project cost of the cats, the dogs, the everything that was just highlighted or showing to you on our plan. As I mentioned to you before, that is our recommended site. But we wanted to do diligence, and we looked at the alternate site, which is up on the hill where the existing large animal housing is located at. And so we looked at it the same way. We looked at how we could break it out into phasing, how we could organize the spaces. And so this plan right here shows how we could do that. The upper right-hand, that is the dog housing. It's a little bit of a reduced program from what we were showing on our recommended option. And then we have the cat and the administration areas on the lower left-hand side. In this scenario, it's actually more expensive, and that's one of the reasons why we're recommending our preferred site. In this scenario, even with a reduced program of dog housing, we're looking at a total project cost of roughly just under $8 million. And that has, is because we have added infrastructure cost. We have additional grading. We have to bring in new fire roads up to that area. It's a little bit more out of sight, out of mind, which is something we're trying to avoid a little bit with the sheltering. And so this shows a Phase 1 cost of, again, just under $8 million. And if we were to build all, a full build-out on that first site up on the hill, we see a total project cost of about $13 million. And that breaks down to a hard cost of about $9.6 and a soft cost of just over $2 million. And so you can see by putting the facility up on the hill where the existing animal housing is, it actually increases the project cost considerably. And so that's one of the reasons why we're recommending the site, the existing site off of Jeff Tuttle, right off the entry. With that, I would open it up to the board for any questions that you may have.
Board, did you have any questions before we got a public comment? Superintendent Toffenauer?
On your Phase 1, that was $10 million.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to know when we're looking at the top view that you had of the whole area.
So this, right here?
That's fine.
Yeah.
What does this include? I mean, if you're going to put equipment in there and level that and grade it all down, are you going to, I mean, because you've got a distance from where the existing is all the way to the back, is that all going to be included, the parking lot that you have there all graded down? Otherwise, there going to be a trail going back there every day?
Well, this right here is the existing site, and it generally already graded. There is grading that would have to occur, but one of the reasons why we like this is we have minimal grading and we have existing infrastructure there. What we would need to do is relocate administration, and I think there's the friends of the shelter facility. That would need to get relocated during construction.
Does this include all that, this $10 million?
Yes. Those are built in soft cost.
Is it all included?
Yes. What, we did not identify, however, where that location would be. Like if administration were to move to a different location, we did not specifically identify where that would be. I think staff has maybe had some discussions on where that could be, but I would probably defer to them on that.
My understanding was that taking it from Site 1 to Site 2 saved us about $2 million as far as grading and utilities?
Yes, that's exactly right.
So that was the reason for then?
Correct.
Administration and focus would move somewhere else?
Correct.
And then the dogs would go pretty much back where the focus trailer is now?
That's correct.
Up practically halfway through administration?
Yeah, so on this image right here with the highlighted area, that's the Phase 1. So that's where we're saying was the $7 million project right there. That yellow area is generally speaking where that focus trailer is right now.
And I said $10 million. I meant the $7 million, Phase 1, $7 million.
We can do the $10 million if you want.
Kerry, is that any question?
Yeah.
Martin, do you have anything else?
I have further things to say, but I'll wait.
Very well, then we'll move on to public comment. I would remind the public, you have three minutes. This is not a question and answer, so do not try to start a dialogue. We will circle back on this after the public comment, but I want to make sure everybody's got a chance to be heard. Sir, your first up. Jim, what a lineup that makes it a little faster.
Name is Jim Wickman, 544 Spyglass in Angels Camp. I just want to go on to comment that this is a very much needed project, and I think the board would consider, and would like this decision. You should consider the entire project now, not doing it in phases because you would have the same problem you're having with that road contract right now, is you know what the prices are now. Spend what you have right now. If you wait two or three years to do another phase, guess what? The prices are going to be higher. So you don't have to come back to the well the second time. Do the entire project while you're doing it. The animals will thank you.
Thank you. And while we're all very excited about this, but generally, we don't do the place. You could do the happy hands. I'll try to keep them moving. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir. Hello again. I was very involved in the previous design attempt on this site when I was on the board of the society. So could you put that slide back up here and show your shows? Okay. Okay. What is the?
Excuse me. Sorry. I'm sorry, Ross. We don't want to, it's not a dialogue. If you want to make a statement about it.
Okay, yeah. I was just confused about whether that's new construction or is it already on the left-hand side, we would consider the $10 million project? And I also encourage you to note the fact that you have a fabulous opportunity up over the hill for a large animal intake and neglect the fact that you have access to Monroe Creek Road on the back. You could reduce your traffic flow significantly if you consider having an access road going back there. That was always our intent to do that. The picture that you have on the screen originally, when you started, was a lot of glass, and I was fearful that that was going to be facing south. What I see is going to be facing east, which is good. But anyway, I'm excited about the prospects of having this finally kind of version. And I also appreciate your comments about getting it done now. What is that phrase, get it done? It's been a long time, what, 25, 30 years? But anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Lisa?
Good morning, board. Lisa Medina, Environment and Management Agency Administrator and Animal Services Director. First of all, I want to thank you. I also want to thank everybody here, too. It's very nice to know for listening to this presentation. I'd like to thank our administration team for working so hard to get this in motion. And I also like to thank NDA for awesome presentation. Thank you very much. Continuing to maintain the degrading conditions in the infrastructure of our current shelter impacts not only our animals, we are charged with, but also the morale of the humans that care for them, including staff, our volunteers, and our community. A new shelter will not only greatly benefit and enhance the health, safety, and welfare of our animals, but would have a positive morale impact on humans that work daily under current challenging conditions. These past few years, we have seen our shelter operations enhanced by improvements in operations and procedures, working with our Calabas Humane Society rescue groups to find homes for all our animals, including dogs, cats, yes, snakes, pigs, horses, owls, parrots, chickens, goats, sheep, and even an occasional guinea pig or two. We also have the addition of our cat and dog foster program, ongoing partnerships with our focus members to facilitate our highly successful rabies and microchip clinics, which not only protect our calabas animals, but protect our community members and our humans as well. A new shelter would be a welcome addition and would also provide a more welcome environment for members of our community, which leads to more visits and more adoptions. We will continue to provide the care, love, medical care, and companionship for the animals in our care currently while meeting our humane shelter standards of care. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Other public comments?
We just need everybody to remember that the data that you were giving originally, 90% of the dogs that we take in are big dogs, big, big, big dogs, so we need big kennels. That is imperative. We have a lot of injuries in the kennels that they are now, I mean, us old folks, when we're taking dogs in and out. And so it's imperative because we have so many big dogs. And Mike? And Mike, where to go? Can verify my, my data.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else standing up to speak. Is there anybody online?
There are no online requests.
No online? I'm sorry? Oh, yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Margaret Wickman, 544 Spyglass in Angels Camp, Greathorne. And I am very much, I have dogs and I'm a, I'm a dog lover. I'm very much involved in next door and on a daily basis. I see ads where they find dogs that were just abandoned. And if they find them, they're kind enough to pick them up, but they already have dogs, they have cats, they cannot keep them. And the, the current shelter doesn't have the room for those dogs. So who is going to help to those dogs? So this larger facility is very, very much needed. The number one choice, I agree with him that the visibility, something that people can see from the, from the street or from the road. And inviting also, if the facility is newer and invites people to volunteer because it's new, it's fresh, and, and also if you want to adopt a pet, have the interaction in a nice area. The noise problem. You go to any shelter and the, the noise especially, all the dogs barking, barking is, it breaks your heart. So I strongly request that you have a heart and spend money on these animals. All they want is forever home and give love. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. And if you'd like to speak, if you could line up, that'd be great. Otherwise, no, you're fine.
Hi, I'm Joanne Elliott. I'm on the focus board. I was on the Humane Society board with Russ for 12 years. So we've, this has been a project since I've been on, came, come to, came to Calaveras County. So I have to say your presentation was excellent, very impressive. I just want to share a story, couple of stories. I had a couple of calls in the last couple of years of people coming to the shelter wanting to adopt animals. And luckily, one of them did. But the others couldn't take it. They went in and they went home and they had nightmares about it. I mean, they pictured the dogs, I mean, the noise level, the smell, everything about it. So we lost, we, we lose people that come to the county that want to find their dog or cats, but they can't handle the situation. And truthfully, I can't. I've gone in a couple of times and I go home and I, I, it's, it bothers me and I, I really hope that you do consider doing it, finishing it, because we need it. Because when we went down to the, the couple of the new shelters that we went to Elk Grove and I went to the one in San Luis Obispo, it's warming. You walk in, you don't feel like, oh gosh, you know, I can't stand it. It's welcoming, you want, you see the love, you see, the animals themselves are in a much nicer environment. They're not stressed. And I, I really do hope you guys will consider doing this from one, all the way to the end because we really need it. We really need it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for the happy hands. Seeing no more, seeing no more public comment, we'll bring it back to the board to discussion. As I understand it, the staff is seeking direction. Is that correct, Teresa?
That is, that is correct. Chairman Germandy, as you know, we have approximately $4 million program for this project right now. Clearly, that's insufficient to fund even the first phase, let alone the entire project. So we are looking for direction from the board on how you would like us to proceed.
Thank you. Supervisor Stoppa?
No, I, I would thank you for the comment as working in the building industry before, even throughout the financial fall from 2008, you know, houses went down, but building, building costs did not go down for the most part. We're on a low end when it comes to material costs for building right now. It's, you know, it's been an up and down thing, especially throughout COVID. And now, on an off note, I do want to acknowledge, from what you said, disease exhausting post-COVID is still better for animals than us. But that's beside the point. Teresa did bring up the $4 million. As I understand, possibly right now, the extra $200,000 from the state that the senator got may be on hold for the time being because of their budget issues? Is that true?
That is correct. The state's budget is, as everyone is aware, very challenged this year.
So, you know, conceptually, this is long overdue. We all, we all love our animals. I, I believe every board member here is very much in favor of getting this done because it's been put off and put off and put off. Not that that was the intent of the boards in the past, but that was the result. The result is it was put off. And again, the mon, the issue, money, cost, and delivery. So when it comes to our capital funds, is there nothing else there beyond that $4 million that we can work with? Or is there any other ideas on how we can be able to pull in funds in another way, conceptually, to be able to at least get through a phase, preferably the whole project, so it doesn't cost us more in the future?
So we have taken some preliminary looks at the budget. What we would like to do is during this budget process that we'll be going through over the next few months, is take a look at how we might manage this project into the budget. As you're aware, we don't print money here. We do have things that we absolutely have to provide for the public that are required. We have very little discretionary funding. If we were to fund even the first phase of this, $3 million is approximately 10% of the board's discretionary funding opportunities. So I think as staff, we'd like to take a look as we know our revenues are coming in, what those look like. Of course, we also have a little bit of a structural deficit that we're still trying to work through. We'd like to take a holistic look at the budget and how we might fit, hopefully, at least phase one, we would look. But I think fitting the entire program in this budget year would be very difficult.
With that, you know, understanding and I appreciate all the work that we've gotten through with your staff and now, now with you in the lead, to be able to get that structural deficit down from nine to $10 million down to near $2 million and change is great. And I think that, you know, moving forward, that, that is, my direction is let's, let's get a correct accounting and then try to move forward on as much as possible moving forward. That's, that's what my idea of the best way to proceed and try and get this done as it's long.
Supervisor, you good?
Yeah.
Supervisor?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify regarding the $200,000 that was promised to us by the state. Lisa Medina and I were on a conference call with the, the grant administrators and those funds have been frozen for the animals' shelter. We will hear back in May, whether they've been distributed or not. My feeling is, personal feeling is, with the deficit that's looming, we probably will not see it. I also wanted just to jump in and say thank you to administration for, for going through the hoops and, and, and getting us this far and to Eric with LDA, obviously. I don't know any other facility in Calaveras County and I would love if somebody would point it out where people work in such, in such substandard facilities. I just don't. And I think, Russ, your point that this has been going on for years and years and years. The question I did want to ask, actually, as I continue, is I believe that $4 million, there's a ticking clock on that money. Is that correct?
That is correct. We will be bringing a plan to your board at mid-year for how we might utilize that funding on things that were programmed through general fund and then take general fund and program it back so that we can hold on to the money for the animal shelter for a longer period of time.
Because I'd take Russ's point in for a penny, in for a pound, through the whole thing, but ultimately, if we, if we're up against the clock, I, we don't want to lose it. We don't want to lose phase one in my, again, I'd like to point out that it's not fluffy puppies and kitties that these people are dealing with on a daily basis. These are animals that are not domesticated, that come in from rows that have been busted. They come from hoarding situations where the majority of these animals are sick and need round the care treatment. It's hugely important that we actually take action on this, I believe, as, as soon as we can. I'd also like to say regarding the design, the one note that I had, Eric, which I know I've spoken to you about before, is I don't think that we need something that's as grand. I get your point that we need to be in the forefront, but I think if, we just need something that's usable.
Sure.
And ultimately, I would like to take Debbie's point again, and, and that is that we don't get small dogs. We get really large dogs and all those kennels need to be the large kennels. And having the quarantine is hugely important, too. I did tour Elk Grove, I think the work that you've done, and to your point, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Martin, Margaret Wickman.
Margaret, when you walk into Elk Grove, it's like church. The way that it's structured and the way that those dogs are placed, you don't hear it. And it's not that, that insane cacophony that you get when you walk into our shelter. So thank you all. I think it's a brilliant design and I would love to see it happen.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes. Thank you for the presentation and thanks to staff, especially Jamie, for keeping this, keeping this going. I know the board's committed. Obviously, everybody in this room is committed to seeing this done. As we go through this budget cycle, it is not going to be easy and we're going to have to make very hard decisions. So I guess my next question is, is the rest of the county staff willing to help us see this to fruition and make sure that one of the, this area is, is suitable, not just for the animals, but also for the volunteers and the workers that have to work in there? Because it's more, it's also the working environment. So it just is everyone, I, and it's everyone on board because this board is going to have to make cuts in the, in the future on other services that are happening or ever want from, from department. And so I just want to make, lay that out on the table now because it is going to get very uncomfortable the next couple, couple months.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Your estimates are designed or based off your design drawings correctly? We, we don't have construction drawings.
That's correct.
So, so it may change. Once we get construction drawings and engineered drawings, that those estimates can go up or they could go down.
That's correct.
Based on what's in those engineered drawings.
Yes, the estimates we put together so far are based upon shelters that we either have recently completed or in design that have been priced out, embedded through contractors. But I don't, we do not have construction drawings at this point.
Yeah, but still without, we go, are we paying with construction drawings? There could be some changes, too, once we go out and get the drawings designed, engineered, and, and those drawings submitted back to us for our approval. There could be some changes in that could lower the prices. And I think we have some other conversation when you made your presentation to me here, that there are some ways that we could maybe reduce some of it. But that being said, and, and Russ was on board when I was here back in 2009 or 10, which is part of this, when we're talking about the state withholding $200,000 that they had promised to us, and we had a big thing here with a big check. The state withheld, withheld funds from us for their budget back then during what was the recessionary time. They have a big situation here with a big deficit. So, you know, we're at the, at the mercy of the state. So when we're talking about them withholding that $200,000, they've already done that to the schools. They could be doing that again to us coming up in, in the coming part, at least we won't know until May or June if they plan on doing that. Because we get two, we get two installments yearly. When you write your check for your property taxes and it says Calaveras County Treasurer, all that money goes directly to the state and then they send money back to us in, in June and December. So we're not going to, no, I'm just bringing it up so everybody's aware that there are a good possibility the state could be withholding money from us, which we would have to use our reserves like we did then in order to meet all of our budget needs. Not to put any damper on this because I'm 100% behind this, 100%. And I, I just would like to know what the state is going to do so we can move forward planning on it and maybe find some money. I have some ideas. And I have some ideas, once we, if we can move forward here and give direction to staff to at least go out and get the drawings done on this, so then we can have a hard handle on exactly what the costs are going to be. I think that's what we should do and I think we should have design drawings done for the entire project, not just phase one. I'm, I'm in favor of trying to get as much of this done at one time. I agree with you. It's only going to get more expensive later on. It may, and what he's estimating at $10 million now could be $14 million if we try and go back and with the cost of everything going up. But I would like to at least propose to staff that they go out with the money we have right now on hand for this project to get those drawings done so we can have a better idea and look at exactly what we're up against to, to get it finalized.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Just around back, I concur with Mr. Toffenelli. I would like the design, because that, that'll tell us what exactly to look for. And then it's another step forward towards, you know, realization of the project. That said, that, and the final thing with budget going into the 2024, '25 fiscal budget and finding out what the state's actually doing, because that's the reality. We all see the want, the need. The reality of it is it goes down to the bottom line when we do the budget. So we have the money now for the drawings. Let's get it done and then move on to the next phase.
Thank you.
And see how much we can get done.
Thank you. You know, I, I have to make, you know, when we put this $4 million towards it, and let's be clear, these are $4 million we could have used on anything in the county. Could put it in parks, could put it in roads, could put it in libraries. We chose to put $4 million, which is probably our largest capital out there, aside from the DA's building. Certainly in my tenure on this board, I never in my wildest dreams thought that $4 million would not be enough money to do that. Obviously shows my naivety on, on what these things actually cost, but it is neither here nor there. My job is to try to get some staff direction. So I hear two things here. One is let's figure out the budget and direct staff to that. The second one is let's direct staff to move to phase two of documents and, and start developing that. Does that sound like the two options that we're talking about, board members?
Yeah. Together at the same time?
No, I'm pretty much, one is a, one is a hold and get more financial information. One is move forward towards construction, to spend more money on this, towards construction documents. Teresa, am I doing this correctly? Tell me what you need.
So quite frankly, both of those things should be discussed. If you want us to move forward with construction documents, as Supervisor Toffenelli has indicated, that would probably help us nail the budget down even more. However, we still are in a very uncertain budgetary time with the state's budget. I think a number of board members have brought up their concern over what could happen with state funding that normally would come to the county and we don't know exactly where we're at with that right now. But we certainly would move forward with the construction documents and then also look at how we fund the different phases of the building. I totally agree with the public. The best option would be to build the entire thing at one time. I'm just not sure that the county is going to have the capacity to do that in the immediate future. So we're trying to get something for the dogs as quickly as possible because we do realize that's our greatest need.
Thank you. If I could ask a question. What is the, you know? Thank you. If I could ask a question. What is the... You know, we've got $4 million. Is there nothing we can do with our existing? Is there nothing we can get done with this $4 million? Because I'm very concerned that, as my fellow board members have pointed out, we've got $4 million, we don't have more money. If we want to get something done, that's kind of what we've got.
Chair, could I jump in there for a second? Because that was a question that I was going to ask, is... Number one is, what happens to administration and focus if the dogs' phase one goes into that area? Where do they get relocated, and how does that work if we're not able to do phase two and three for a long time? But also, what I wanted to ask is, if $4 million is all we're ever going to get, why don't we just demo what we have as the dogs right now and build the dog what we can for $4 million in that section?
So, maybe to answer your second question first, one of the reasons why we're looking at putting the dogs kind of where the focus and the administration is, is because those two structures are movable. They're modulars, they can be easily relocated. If we take down the existing dogs, then we have to find a place to put the dogs. If we're that basically year during construction, and that's a more expensive undertaking, because we have to meet some certain standards of care, and you have staff moving back and forth, we have to be able to get food to them, we have to be able to clean them. And so, that's the more expensive location if we were to put them right there. And then the other part is looking long-term master planning. So, even though we may not be able to do, you know, phase 1A or what have you, I want to be able to set it up for the future. If five years, 10 years down the road, you do get a windfall and be able to do it, we're not having to go back and reinvent the wheel.
Supervisor Toffenelli, you had some?
Yeah, well, I think there's things we can do with that $4 million to go forward with. I think we need the drawing first, and then we can set the paths for everything and get it all graded and get it all done with part of that money and maybe do the substructure part of it, running the plumbing out there and the water out there, whatever we need. That could be part of it, but I think the first phase we need is the drawing, so we can look at what it is, and we can get the cost estimate off that to do whatever we want to do and find out exactly what we can do with that. Those... That's the first thing we need to do.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Again, I concur with Mr. Toffenelli. And, you know, hearing Teresa correctly and kind of what I tried to iterate before, drawings done, that way we can work into the phase of budgetary issues and how we're going to navigate through that. And I do like what Mr. Hubbard did say is, what can we get done with that $4 million? Because we can realize that now. And what's the cost on those drawings?
So, we... In the budget that I put together, we do have an overall cost for, and I'll...
I just wanted to say out loud for the...
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, I'd like to hear it.
We're the entire...
Yeah. If I were to look for the entire phase one build-out, that does not include a medical clinic. And to maybe answer a question that was kind of brought up during the public comment, the portion to the right would be a future medical clinic. So, state mandates you to chip into neuter animals before they go out into the public. Currently, the county contracts for that. Now, we're not necessarily suggesting at this point that the county build the facility, but if in the future, we have a spot for it. And so, that's what that space on the right-hand side covers. For the $10 million project, that's the full phase one build-out. We had an estimate here for design fees of roughly around, just under $800,000. Our current contract, and we have a current contract now for the program and conceptual design, we have not encumbered the entirety of that contract. And so, there is some savings coming back from that as well.
Well, that's nice, for once, to hear about an engineer. Thank you.
We've not committed to a number yet.
Yeah, we don't hold you to it. I asked him, is it 600,000?
And one thing I might add to, we talked a little bit about the Elk Grove Shelter and, you know, to get costing. So, for the Elk Grove Shelter, that was actually done in a similar way that you guys are discussing right now, where we did the drawings for the entire facility, but did bid alternates. And so, we had a cost for a base bid, which was much smaller than they actually built, but then also additive alternates, so that the city council at the time could see what each portion of that project would cost. Ultimately, they decided to build out the whole thing at the time, but it was, the drawings were parceled out so that it could be partitioned out, if you will, from a cost standpoint.
I think that's what we're asking for right now, at least a few of us. So, that's something I could agree for, for direction overall, if... As one.
We've got a... You know, my position is, I'm very hesitant to spend $800,000 on a plan that I have a hard time seeing us accomplish. I think about, you know, the wrong stones you can't always give, you might give what you need. I'd really like to take another look at this and figure out if we could get what we need for $4 million bucks, because I'm concerned we're going to spend $800,000 on a plan that we're going to put on a shelf and wait for a mona from heaven someday. Unless anybody brought their checkbook in the room, we've got quite a deficit ahead of us. And I hear what Supervisor Toffenelli says about the risks. So, my job is to build a consensus amongst this board. I would... My position is, I'd rather send it back and re-sharpen that pencil and figure out something we can do. I'm hearing what Supervisor Toffenelli and Supervisor Stoppa are saying, which is to move ahead, planning documents. So, it's not a vote, so let's just kind of go down the road and tell me where you're at. I think I understand. Did I state your position correctly, Supervisor Stoppa?
Yeah, I think that's our strong...
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah.
Supervisor Toffenelli, here with them as well. Supervisor Hubbard?
Yeah.
Okay, well, there's consensus, Madam CAA, to move towards construction documents and come back to us with some budget information on how we're going to build, how we're going... Where we're coming up with the delta.
We will bring that back to your board.
Okay, is there anything else, board members? Is that direction correct and clear? All right. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming down today. I know this means a great deal to many people in this room, and obviously, we're struggling to figure this out. So, thank you. And we'll give you... If you guys are leaving, we'll give you a second to clear out before we start the next agenda. You're not to get them after me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You did a really good job, Mark. He's a good consultant.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, Susan. All right, we're back in order. Item number 19, Human Resources. Stacy?
Item 19, resolution, Human Resources, approve a resolution establishing a new non-DOT county drug-free workplace policy effective February 23, 2024.
Good morning, Chair Karamendi and members of the board, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. I am bringing before you today a new workplace, drug-free workplace policy, and this will take the place of the policy we have rescinded from our ordinance, which will be in effect in 30 days. The new policy meets all of the requirements under state and federal laws to have a drug-free workplace. The new policy lays out better definitions as what that means, and so, how we achieve the drug-free workplace. One of the other items that it does lay out is reasonable suspicion testing. And so, if we are going to have a policy that states you cannot be under the influence in the workplace, we have to also have a way to make that happen. And so, under the reasonable suspicion testing, having this in our policy is not a catch-all, trying to catch somebody doing something wrong. It is making sure that all of our employees in the workplace is not under the influence and are being able to do their job, which is also fair for those around them. With this reasonable suspicion testing, we are making sure that all managers and supervisors, anybody that manages staff, has the appropriate training, which is a training specific to alcohol, the signs of being under the influence of alcohol, and then also being under the influence of drugs, both legal and illegal. The new policy also lays out state requirements, SB 2188, which means we will not discriminate against off-duty cannabis use. And so, we do not, for example, our law enforcement no longer asks questions regarding past cannabis use. And so, we are not discriminating against any off-duty use, but we are ensuring that employees are not impaired on duty. And so, I would be happy to answer any questions regarding our new policy.
Questions from the board. Supervisor Toffenelli?
Just to clarify, though, the off-duty does not, when you're saying the federal regulation, anyone that has to hold a DOT license...
This...
I just want to make it clear out there to county employees, if you've got to hold a DOT license, that you still can't...
Correct. And this policy specifically states those that it covers is those that are not under the DOT policy, which, under federal law, cannabis is still considered an illegal substance. And so, this is strictly for those that do not fall under DOT policies, which is a separate policy.
To clarify that even further, alcohol's not under... Is not an illegal substance, but it's still, if you're drunk, you know, or test positive for that at the time, you violate DOT also. But the question when it comes to cannabis is the timing of testing and whether they can prove that somebody's on it or not, or if they've priorly smoked it during their off time. Is that correct?
So, there is... You know, the science is still developing as far as testing on the reasonable suspicion side. And so, one of the things with cannabis is that there is psychoactive metabolites and non-psychoactive metabolites. And there is a saliva test that has been perfected in Australia, which they are beginning to use in the US, which detects the psychoactive metabolites from THC, which means most likely you are impaired at that time. But it's not just the testing, it's also the reasonable suspicion is what is really important. If somebody is acting in a manner that is not normal for them, they're falling asleep at their desk, they're doing things that is just very outside of what they would normally do, this is also why we require a manager or supervisor to say, yes, they are acting in this manner. They give us the list of why they feel they're impaired, and then we will call in for the testing. HR also confirms that they... The employee is meeting the standard that requires reasonable suspicion. So, it's not... Well, we worked closely with SEIU and other bargaining units over this policy, and one of the concerns is that you may get a manager or supervisor who's picking or targeting an employee. And so, I have staff that is also trained. They will sit down, go through the list of reasons why they feel this person is impaired, and also confirm that there is solid reasons to call for the testing. The person is placed on paid administrative leave. They're not... This is not a policy that we're trying to terminate people. We're trying to make sure that we have a healthy workforce and that we're also helping people get the assistance that they need. And of course, this is a case-by-case, depending on, you know, if we have somebody under the influence of alcohol driving small children around, that is egregious. And so, it is a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. You already answered part of what I was going to follow up with. All the unions and associations moving forward have already worked this out and are agreeable to this. And also, this is pretty much cut and dry from my viewpoint. It's updating something that we have had on the books for quite some time once again, and it's bringing it up to date. So, I appreciate the work, and I see it pretty cut and dry when it comes down to it.
Yes, and I do want to point out that... So, our law enforcement, those that are under DSA, and our probation officers fall under a different policy, and it does state in our policy, their policy is a little bit stricter. It also outlines like off-duty, you know, undercover work and things like that with law enforcement. So, we... There is a little bit different. I will tell you, their policies are also being updated regarding off-duty cannabis use. Post has confirmed that that is being done, so.
Supervisor? I just wanted to say that I was... I had no idea that we were so out of date until I read the new one. It's impressive. Let me ask you about CBD, people that take it for pain relief and/or to sleep. How does that... I mean, that wouldn't affect your daily...
So, CBD is...
It's not, yeah.
So, it also... It depends. And one of the things that people need to be very aware of, and I will say that the unions and I came to an agreement several months ago, but we've been doing a lot of research to make sure we could back up what we are telling you. But a lot of TH... CBD is not lab-confirmed, the level of THC in it, because I know that there's some that will order it off of Amazon, and it says, you know, no THC. But there, you know, there have been cases where... And we actually have had that happen here. We had somebody under DOT test positive for cannabis, but they're like, I've never touched cannabis. And in researching it, it came down to a CBD that he was using that said no THC, but it still had THC in it. And this is where we work with the employee. We don't... It's not a case of we're trying to... It's, I got you, now we're going to terminate you. We do investigate, like in this case, and then the person actually did just a substance abuse program, which they did fantastic with, and there's never been another issue. So, I think that's where it's just making sure, and we are going... We are educating our employees, we are educating our managers and supervisors.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions from the board? Public comment on this item? This is an action item. Any public comment online?
Here are no online public...
Okay, seeing none in the room. We'll bring it back for a motion, or...
So moved. Second?
By Supervisor Stoppa, second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor announcements. Board members should make brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of local agency, or make other announcements, or report out. Supervisor Toffenelli, did you want to start?
No.
All right, very well. Supervisor Stoppa?
Nothing to report.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes. Update, the new acting District 10 for counseling is Grace... I'm going to bot this. Miss Segal. Yes, Miss Segal. Thank you. She's been with us for a long time. She's been... But she's always been a staffer. But that's exciting, so congratulations to Grace. And then, I'm just letting the rest of the board members know that February 8, we will be having another meeting in Puyallupi County at the OES office with producers related to the structure of what the slaughter processing would look like. So, we've had a number of meetings in the fall, and now this is kind of to bring all those individual meetings into one big meeting with everyone in the room to really put what the producers want to see. And Supervisor Haff from Puyallupi County will be hosting and moderating, and then we have Brian and Teresa from the UC extension attending. And Flavie, although she is now with Arizona State, she will be attending via Zoom to help with the transition to the new UC members or staffers.
Thank you. Supervisor Hubbard?
Thank you, Chair. On the 11th, I attended the Agency on Aging board meeting, and on 22nd, the CSCSA meeting. Both organizations are healthy and doing very well. Nothing to report there. I just wanted to give a shout out to Public Works Administration and the CMCAA for helping to get burn buddies done. It looks like we'll be able to get that contract signed this week. Thank you.
And since I'm next tonight, and we'll come back to you, Gary. The... I tend to our... I attended RCRC last week because he re-elected as Chair of Golden State Connect Authority, which hoped to break ground this year and get that moving forward. So get to wrap that up. And I also joined a subcommittee which would be of interest to this group for what we're calling Williamson Act 2.0. So 40 rural counties sit down, talk about the Williamson Act with Department of Conservation and see how we can fix it systemically and hopefully get some of those subvention funds back to the county as well. There you go. Supervisor Toffenelli, you had some items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And congratulations to Supervisor Hubbard for being elected chair for the Central Sierra Child Protection Agency.
There you go.
I want to talk a little bit about our general plan and one of the elements that in our recently adopted plan requires the county to have an ordinance in place protecting historical buildings and lands. And it's currently being worked on, but like the state points out that it takes a long time in order to get something out and done. And when, when they do finish it, it has to go to the Planning Commission first and they have to go through it and make their comments before it eventually comes to us. And there's some things going on that I think maybe we should look at having staff prepare an urgency ordinance for us that addresses this issue with our historical buildings and lands. It's not unprecedented. There's a number of counties and cities within the state that have emergency ordinances in place or had them in place prior to adopting their ordinances, permanent ordinances. Palo Alto is one, Redondo Beach is one, Tahoe Sierra Preservation Council, Davis, Pasadena, the City of Maywood. They've all had these types of documents in place because of the length of time it takes in order to get a permanent ordinance in place that fits the needs of the county or the city that it's having it done for. So I would like to ask if we can have a, a, have staff put together an urgency ordinance addressing that and get it in place while the new one or the one, the permanent one by planning it is being taken care of.
If I could just ask, how long can the plan, can we just do the ordinance? And have we already started here ginned up?
The permanent ordinance?
Right. I mean, it's, I understand what Gary's saying on the stutter step to get going and I support that too. Just, can we just either think the whole thing?
We can, but I mean, I think Supervisor Toffenelli is right in terms of a timeframe and given the zoning code update that's being worked on right now and some of the other ordinances coming out of planning, realistically, I don't think that's going to happen, you know, right away.
Okay, so what I'm seeking is consensus on the board to direct staff to bring back a urgency ordinance for historic preservation.
For us to look at and have a conversation about.
So, what do you, Supervisor Stopper? I mean, you can't have a discussion on the topic itself, just directly.
No, to clarify my, my, my point for direction, will this hold up any other parts as we move forward when it comes to implementation?
So I don't know, you mean?
So planning only has so many hands to work with.
Oh, I think, and I, you know, hopefully my staff doesn't kill me for saying this, but I think we could get an urgency ordinance to the board relatively quickly without hamstringing other projects that are in the works. I believe that it would not affect those, yeah.
Very good. I can support that if that's excellent.
I'd like to follow your thing. We've already had an agreement on hardwood, so we should be seeing that. We already did that discussion, had, gave direction, staff should be in front of us.
Yeah, and I think that there's just a couple last pieces that still, that weren't part of it and need to get drafted. But yes, I believe it's on the way, in the pipeline.
Teresa, good with that? So you've got direction to, we've got, I think there's consensus here, bring back your ordinance as Gary put forward. And it sounded like there's also a desire to see that hardwood back in front of us as soon as we can.
We will bring this forward.
Yes.
Supervisor Toffenelli, is that?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing, seeing anything else in the room? Madam Clerk, anything else we're forgetting?
I don't believe so.
Madam CIO?
Nothing from me.
Madam Counsel? Very well, this meeting stands adjourned.